This is Henry Friday from Headline Surfer. We're here with our second debate of the morning here on this beautiful Friday with Heather Post and Al Smith.
Good morning, Henry.
And this is District Four County Council, and I believe it's Ormond Beach, Holly Hill, and some incorporated areas.
Ormond by the Sea and also West Daytona.
Right.
And Eastaling.
West Daytona.
LPGA.
Oh, right, 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 unincorporated areas, right. So we're going to do opening statements, and Heather, you'll go first. A minute or so.
Sure.
Please introduce yourself.
So I'm Heather Post, and I'm running for County Council, District Four. And I have a tremendous commitment to community, and that's one of the things that I'd really like to point out. I have a record of achievement in the community, in the business community, or locally. I have a record of public service throughout my entire life, again, there in the community. I like to find many times and law enforcement to back up the community. And as far as...
Law enforcement, firefighter, paramedic, deputy cop.
Law enforcement, right, right. I worked over the course of two decades in law enforcement, and worked most of my time spent as a detective, but I've worked road patrol in many, many areas.
Al, you want to go next?
My name's Al Smith, a lifelong resident of the district. Grew up in Mitchell Beach, with the Seabees High School. Graduated in 1976, went to Florida State, and worked at Halifax Health after there for a couple of years. And then I got into the family business, which Angel and Phelps Chocolate Factory. And helped lead the charge at its current location, and also opened up Angel and Phelps Cafe. Very involved in what goes on in downtown. I've been on the Downtown Redevelopment Board for 17 years.
I'm saying downtown what?
Redevelopment Board.
Right.
So it's been 17 years on that. Most of it either is vice chair or chairman, so very involved there, very involved in the business down there. Also, the Chamber of Commerce for a long time, making the campus society. I put on a car event this weekend downtown called a Dream Crease Car Show. Proceeds go to Sophie's Circle, which is a charity for people who are out down the block who can't pay for their pets.
But you forgot the most famous thing you are of all, the morning radio.
I'm a radio guy. Yeah, did radio.
The radio guy.
Took a break to do this, but morning radio show.
That's how I made it.
So I gained a lot of knowledge doing that, covering County Council, City Commission meetings, also, like I said, also a volunteer who helps local businesses.
All right, let's get right to it. I'll start with you, Al. Tell me the number one reason why you are running, and why you feel that that reason puts you in a better position than your opponent.
Thanks for asking that question. So I feel like we're on the... Been here my whole life, I think, with all the time in here. We're on the cusp of great prosperity right now in Bush County. So I think my years of experience as a business leader, my years of experience, you know, leading and charging other directions for the city, and other ventures that, I have the ability, especially with, like you said, the radio show. I got to go to a lot, a lot of meetings and see what was going on. I got very interested, and I really think that my passion, my drive, my vision, my leadership, I can make a difference. So I just think the difference between me and my opponent is I have more experience and knowledge of what's going on. I get the ground running and make a true difference.
Now, you said, just to follow up, you said something to the effect of you feel that the community is on the cusp of prosperity?
I do.
And what, where do you base that on? Because my understanding of the community is, it's still a tough, a tough situation for a lot of families. We're the second highest or third highest taxed county in the entire state. Our taxes produce the second or third lowest dividend return, which means it's more difficult for county government to spread the wealth. A lot of demands, you know. I want to just finish for you. Like the homeless, beach driving issues, what would, how would you separate to say what your number one target? You've established clearly your identity is homegrown, but being homegrown, what would be the number one thing for you that would be your going in the door, we've got to deal with this first?
Well, I would say number one is the homeless issue, but I, which I think relates to other issues. I think right now, there's a divide between the cities and the counties. There's a lack of communication, accountability between the two. So I think as a county councilman, I would help bridge those gaps between the city. I've talked to all the mayors, we're all kind of friends of mine, so I know what's going on. And I think we've got to do a better job of communicating with the cities as to what's going on. We had the homeless issue crisis in the downtown. I spoke to all three mayors of the cities that I would be representing, and none of them are from their counterparts.
Now, your three mayors would be again?
Derek Henry, Ed Kelly, who's the chair, and John Penny.
Ed Kelly, right, from Holly Hill. Do you think the homeless thing is the greatest issue, or is violent crime another aspect?
No, I think the homeless issue is, is the biggest issue for us. One, because it's the right thing to do to take care of this problem. And two, when I went out and knocked about 1,500 doors, and what I found out, I thought the beach driving was a big issue, but it's not. A big issue, everybody's homeless. And I think once we're able to put into place some communications, a way to work together, and also with the private sector, they'll be able to take that same template and apply it to other issues, whether it's dealing with transportation, or how we're going to economically grow our community. So I think getting that done can really set the groundwork for what goes forward.
Okay, I know it's been elongated, but the second part of my question was, now that you've identified, you clearly have done that, what you feel is an overriding issue or issues, and how would you be in a better position than your opponent to tackle those one or two overriding issues?
I think back to experience and knowledge of what's going on, and knowing most, already having a relationship with these people, so I'm starting in a place where there's trust already there between them.
What are people telling you that gives you that impression?
Guys, I talk to them all the time, and I give them a lot of support.
Are they feeling like they're not being heard, or the government's just spinning its wheels?
Well, you specifically talked about elected officials in the cities, yes, they feel like they're not being heard, or they're...
By the county?
Right. By the elected officials.
Right.
Yes.
And so you feel that your experience would be far more superior to your opponent's in that regard?
Yes.
Okay. Heather Post, I mentioned, you know, your opponent Al Smith thought homelessness is pretty serious, and I believe he's right, although I believe the violent crime is a more deteriorating than, you know, law enforcement. Where do you see as the, of those, of those two in particular, which one to you is the more encompassing and more difficult to tackle?
Well, certainly public safety is, is the number one issue that we need, we definitely need to tackle in our community, and public safety is the utmost. But when you talk about the homeless issue, that's absolutely an issue that we need to tackle. It's the forefront, not just our community, but it's the forefront of every community. And it's, it has a great impact on tourism, and a great impact on businesses. It's one of its benefits in our period, and that stuff is something that we need to have. A home place, we, you know, the shelter, and they talk about it.
Now, do you understand the concept, home place versus...
Family shelter versus...
Versus dequadratically?
Individually, right, right. But I will tell you that out of any, any officials either currently in office or running for office, I was the only person that actually went to that neighborhood meeting. I've been door to door in those neighborhoods there, on the hill of Rose Tire, and I've talked to the citizens there about their needs or their wants, and I know they're still working with them. Is, you know, I'm, you know, I left home very early. I left home at 14. I've been homeless. I know what it's like to not know where you're next.
Are you, where did you come originally?
Well, I was originally, I was originally born actually in Europe. It's an American.
Oh, okay. Let me ask you a secret question I asked your opponent Al, Al Smith. You've identified what you see as an overriding issue. How are you better positioned than your opponent who's lived here his whole life, who's been engrossed in the community? And when he talks about, and I've seen it from the morning shows, and his dialogue with people, you know, he's, he's been there. What do you, what would you think is able to be the same, would be different, and why would you be in a better position than he would?
So I think that's a fantastic question. He has been touting that he's been in the community his entire life, but that's something I would say is, look at that, he's been in the community his entire life, and truly what, what record of achievements on a D.C., or, or any real effect on the community, what there really hasn't been to the community?
You don't think he has a problem with that, and just by what he does with...
Well, I, I think that, you know, events are very important in the community, but, you know, I own a company too, and I do a lot of stuff in the community through my company, but I also do things additionally that aren't specifically for my nonprofit, and...
Like what?
Well, lots of things. So I advocate for women's children, I'm on board of a number of different things in the community. I do a lot with the Peace Center for Girls. I'm on the State Public Affairs Committee for a number of different organizations, just, you know, I could go down the list. But when, you know, he continues to mention that he's been on the board of the state, or the local redevelopment committee for 17 years, but really what impact have we seen from that? So what I would say is, I have been in this community for 15 years. I wasn't born here, but I've been here for 15 years.
Hold on, let me just stop you for a minute. Okay, let me just stop you for a minute. I just want to get clarification from our viewers. Now, what is the redevelopment board that you're on? Isn't that dealing with economic opportunities?
Absolutely.
And hasn't that not...
Well, in the context of the time I was on it, we went through the greatest, you know...
The housing crisis.
Depression, basically.
In those 17 years.
We were around zero for that. So previous to the economy going bad, we had several projects that were still in the equation. But I will say this, what you see right now in the downtown, if you want to measure it in things that are objective, two things would be, you know, of the, of the rent, of the space available, how much is rented, and how high are the rents? And right now, in the whole, talking about 30 years in downtown, there's more space rented at a higher price than I can afford. And we did a couple of things on that board that stimulated that. One was we gave back...
You were on the board?
I'm not on the board. I haven't been on the board. But it's been a lot tougher, so.
I want to get into a big thing about that.
Well, I want to be clear. While I was chairman, we implemented the idea of matching money for people who would fix up front façades. We got a lot of front facade specs. And they also, that, that worked, but we needed even more, so we were able to help people with that. We were able to help them also fix insights in the building, and that has led to what I've just discussed, which is if you want to point to something objective...
So you're basically coming from an economic perspective, you're coming from a victim perspective. Is there any kind of marriage here between the two?
Well, so...
In terms of who would be the better candidate for office?
But let, let me also...
Let me just answer that question, please.
Okay, go ahead.
If you take his business argument, you take your crime and victim advocacy and law enforcement...
But I also have great business actually.
Hold on. Now, I understand that, but he's, he's touting his, his big war thing of being the redevelopment. You're touting your experience in dealing with people, Center for Girls and victim crimes.
Community.
Community. Who of the two of you, and either one jump in, please, just not to talk the other one, would be the better candidate to bring those two together?
Well, I obviously believe I'm the better candidate.
Why?
So I think, I think the main thing that the public needs to look at is, I was not placed into this race by any specific group or any specific person.
Well, let me stop you right there.
And I certainly wasn't placed, I have no single agenda of my own, and I've been endorsed by all of the deeps-on-the-ground people in the community. I've been endorsed by the Busha, by the professional firecracker association, the building industry association, I could go down the list. But the reason that those people have endorsed me is because I can relate to the real public, and I represent the real public, and I've worked for the real public, and I have, I have a track record in the 15 years that I've been in Bush County of giving 110% for working for the community, and that's a real contribution.
As a reporter, I...
I think that's a big difference.
As a reporter, I just want to put in perspective for the viewers out there, you have to kind of translate, you know, the two passionate candidates for office, and what I'm getting a sense of, this is the union side, and this is the management side. Do you have endorsements from Sheriff Ben Johnson?
I do.
You have endorsements from Glenn Ritchie, or are you letting me go first?
No, Glenn Ritchie. Okay, you have, pretty much anybody who's been there.
Hyatt Brown, the Speedway Center, right?
Hyatt Brown Speedway, absolutely.
But don't you also have some Speedway, or...
No, no, he's all Speedway.
Well, what about Mr. Mousany, which one of you is...
I do have the supportive voice.
He's on the Speedway, but what?
Okay, he's had a lot of...
No, that's a pretty common one.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Well, and I, so he has the backing...
Go ahead, keep finishing, we're answering your questions.
He has the backing of, well, so, and I'll just turn it, he has the backing of the good old voice system, and that's what I see as the big difference, is, you know, I'm not part of the good old voice system, and I've shown that I'm not afraid to stand up for what's right. I will continue to stand up for what's right. And I have the backing of the deeps-on-the-ground people in the community, and I know that I can make a true difference. That's not to say that I can't work with and collaborate with those groups, like the morning standing and those other groups, but...
You do realize between the two of you, you're approaching a quarter of a million dollars in funding for a job that pays $42,000. Go ahead, Al. Jump in when you need it.
You know what? I was asked by some people absolutely to get in this race, not for any one issue or one reason or one thing. I would not put my family through what I've gone through, taken up the lead from my job that paid me more than half my salary to suck up to somebody.
Didn't you give up your job?
I did. I mean, hopefully I'll get it back when this is over.
But there's no guarantee there.
There's no guarantee, but...
You can give him some support.
I'm very proud of the support I have, and I know my opponent, if she had the opportunity to get money from the Speedway, or Hyatt Brown, or Glenn Ritchie, or those, I mean, I don't hide any, I'm proud of the fact that those people support. Those are people that have been in our community for a long time, and they've made a difference in our community. They have done things, get to give back to this community, they've done success in business. You'd be referring to Don? Don't have anything great to gain by meeting the county council or not. She's supported by the redevelopment.
Well, I beg to differ.
He's all about...
Well, I mean, Hyatt Brown is a pretty powerful individual. He's what I call one of the big insiders, you know, among the big three or four.
Absolutely.
And I love that you continue to tell that I'm backed by one of the, you know, backed by the backers and the special entries that are moving to bring cars off the beach, but...
Well, I didn't hear you say that yet.
You are, he just said that. But you are, Hyatt Brown, who is your biggest supporter, who has given you over $100,000 as a loan.
Well, I mean...
Well, if you include the PAC, the PAC was $50,000, exactly.
And she gave you $45,000.
Well, let me, let me stop you both right there.
But what I can say, but what I'd like to say about that is that he was the person who actually went in front of the county council twice to take cars off the beach. And I believe at that time, you were on the front row of the seat, so I've, talking about...
No, hold on a second. I was working at my radio job, but I would, I would have been happy to be in the front row.
No, 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 you were on the front row.
No, I wasn't there.
The last meeting?
No, I wasn't there.
The last...
The county council meeting.
The last county council meeting.
I would have been happy to have been, I wasn't there.
No, you were...
Actually, I was in the front row with my camera.
And he was on the other end.
That was Hope Place. I mean, I was there, and I would, I'm not saying I wouldn't have been there, but I was, just to be factual, I was not there, but I supported. I was on the local committee of Daytona Beach. We absolutely support the compromise that came up. I went right in and talked to my friends who run the Suns on the Beach, and told them how I stood, and while they disagreed with me, they respected my opinion and my opinion has never changed, long before I got into office.
When is your...
But that's what's interesting about this...
Well, hold on. What is your position on the beach?
But he continuously tells that I'm backed by the supporters of the cars off the beach to gain this opportunity.
What is your exact position on the beach?
My position is what the ordinances that were passed in May of 2015, which were basically to take cars up in terms of, from Silver Beach to University, if a hotelier is able to make the demands to be...
That's kind of a, that's kind of a one-off area of the beach.
Right, that's the core area.
And then there were two other faci, there were two other hotels, the Western...
The Desert Inn, which now is going to be a Western, was the one that was the first one to ask, and then we had some others say we need to...
Well, then Glenn Storch jumped in, and they can have cars, and we want our cars. And I remember that was a big battle at the, and I'll be talking to the county chair candidates about that when we're in the next.
When you talk about economic development and things, you know, and me giving 110% to the issues, and giving 110% to this role I'm in, and yet, I just got back from an inner-city trip up to Virginia Beach to discuss with them, because they are very much like Daytona Beach. And I went up with a number of officials from the county, and the cities and things, and, you know, we talked with them about the different economic development goals that, and the things that we can work in, issues that they've had that we see that we are currently having, and, you know, I'm, I had meetings for three days with those people. So those are things...
It seems like, I got the sense that, Al, you're very understated today. Heather, you seem to want to get those little one-liners in there, those little digs, and it's like you're just going across each other, but to my perspective, you have the Speedway. It's recreational, it's tourism, it adds to the economic engine. You've got the beach, who owns the famous beach. Imagine where Daytona would be without either of those, or just one of those, like where I live in Sanford. Our big thing is St. John's Bridge and downtown flea market. So you have these two draws, but it seems to me, and I've only been here for 20 years, there was a big company named General Electric, and I haven't heard either of you talk about true economic development. What would be your ideas to bring in a major company? We're paying this guy that used to be the head of the Daytona State College, Kent Schoffels, private investors.
CEO Alliance.
Right, just to negotiate with companies, you know, maybe get some tax incentives. What would either of you do to try to get a company in there?
Well, that's been part of the things that I'm doing. That was part of, you know, the inner-city trip that I went on for the last three days.
But that was a, well, hold on, that's a tourism entity, right?
Right, that was part of the trip. But I've, I've sat down and talked with Keith Gordon, I've talked with, you know, the research park individuals over at every road, I was just talking to some people over at every road yesterday about, you know, the possibility. We have, there are people in the county that have talked to Boeing about coming in, and talked to a number of different big companies like that, and we had you here. Why can't we have places like mine? But I'll tell you the reason why we can't have people like mine right now, without doing some underlying things. So economic development is not about just asking these companies to come in and bringing them in, because they're not wanting to come. So we have to look at the underlying issue of why they're not wanting to come. And, you know, to defend some things is great, to bring people into the area, but we really need to be working on the quality of life issues, and making...
Well, the role that the county council plays, and the CEO Alliance is fairly private, they have some public...
Right.
But we're able to go and negotiate out of the sunshine, which is necessary. But what the county's role as county councilman, my role is to help the businesses that exist, to help them. I think how we grow our local economy is to help those entrepreneurs that are here, to help them grow their businesses, identify places where they're being hassled, where we can streamline permitting, to help them grow, and make, you know, lower the bar of risks that they take, and up the reward in any way we can to help them, obviously being fair to everybody. But that's the, the number one role, is to help from the county council's standpoint, help the businesses that are being broken.
Now...
And like you say, Air Nautical Park, it is something that will spin off many new businesses and take the businesses that are here and help them, but they put the Speedway to, you know, what's, you know, it's half a billion dollar investment. They, they're making huge investments into our community, creating many, many jobs. So the fact that I have those people supporting me, I'm very happy about that.
No, but let's look at those, let's look at those jobs, though. Movie theater, high-end, what's that, retail outlet? You know, they've got stuff that'll bring in tourists that will spend more money, which will bring it to the economy. But, you know, I'm, my specialty in covering, as a news reporter for 30-something years, has been basically cops and courts, all horrible stuff, breaking news. But my understanding, and I haven't heard this from either of you, is what do you perceive as a policymaker? Do you know what that is? What is a policymaker? Do you understand what I'm asking? How about you, Al?
Yeah, I mean, from a policymaker, I think that's why you need someone with leadership and mission skills, who understands the community and what goes on in developing policy. And when you develop policy, you've got to consider everybody's needs and wants, and you have to be fair. And a lot of times, as somebody who's in elected government, that's why government's different than business. When I ran my business, I could decide what we were going to do, and I was somewhat in a sense of dictator, whereas when you're on the, on a county council, you've got to be able to negotiate and create policies that'll have long-term effect, that will take a big picture for you, what's going on, and all those many people that's across the policy.
So let me speak to that, though. So when you talk about knowing how to create policies and knowing how to do that kind of stuff, as far back to the early 90s, I was up in Ohio Hasse, helping to create laws for victims' rights. I've been on the State Public Affairs Committee, I've been on a number of statewide boards that have been involved in all of those kinds of things for many, many years, so...
I would like, I want to challenge both of you now to give me three, just three, examples of action taken by the county government that has led us more towards what you've introduced at the beginning of the promise of a new day. Name three projects or situations that this county council in the last couple of years has introduced, made, come to fruition. Just grab, can you do that?
I would say one would be to take around this area, so building that area outside of downtown.
Okay, that's retail, that's probably the weakest one. Anyone else?
Well, they've, they've given money to the park, the Air Nautical Park, that everybody's
done. I think what they did with Hope Place, while I've been critical of how they handled the other chronic illnesses, Hope Place...
No, that's a good thing, you've got a social issue of families and prices. I mean, there are a lot of families that are paycheck away from being kicked out, not paying their rent, their lights get turned off, and I think both of you agree with that.
I give you a third, since you asked for three. The third is I really believe that what we did on the beach was the right thing. I think it's a compromise that, you know, take roots and grow, and I think what's happening with taking the Desert Inn from, God for sake, let's tell, most of my life just been nowhere you'd ever seen.
Well, it was part of Central, so it's a great break.
It's worse than that. And so now, take that and turn it into a Western.
I've got three minutes.
Buy a hotelier...
How many minutes?
Buy a hotelier that has reinvested several times, and that's my example of a small business person, that's supporting me, by the way, who has gone in and changed things for the good, and is a local company, so he's not coming from out of town, promising the world, and not, not, he has to look at everything he says, so those are the ones that are important.
And what were you doing there, Chris?
Well, actually, I would just reiterate basically what you said, a whole place, you know, that's definitely something that I...
A whole place would be a social issue.
It affects our airport.
Air Nautical, the one Daytona project.
Research park, which I have brought up.
Right. How about JetBlue?
JetBlue? So I've, I've had many, that was one of the first people that I went to when I decided on running, also was Rick Hall, they were talking.
You know what I find kind of ironic? The people that, and believe me, I lost my potential at the Speedway for a couple of years, because I dared to write about people getting a lot of campaign contributions to stadium funding, but these same people that are rich bastards supporting Al Smith are the ones that ponied up a lot of their own money to get JetBlue here. Are you, either of you aware of that?
Well, and like I said, I've had many, many meetings at the airport, many, many meetings with them about the possibilities for growth around the airport, and not just bringing in, you know, storage units and things like that, but actually things that will really, really help the economy and really, really help the economy.
How much total money have you brought in campaign contributions? No matter who it is, it's total today.
Mike's uh-
Is it including tax?
No, no, I'm asking you. Yeah, that's including taxes, everything.
I've only worried one sixty.
One sixty. How about you, Heather?
Probably around one sixty.
So two hundred and sixty thousand between the two of you. And the two minutes that we have remaining, which one of you is going to thunder out of the argument of blocking souls? If you will? Do you see that that's going to be an uphill?
No, not at all.
I don't, I don't think it's a battle necessarily, or an uphill battle. I think it's just a battle. And I, like I said, I was placed in the race to finance the people, and I don't have any-
Well, how did you get in the race?
I decided to run. I'm a person that's very passionate about my community. You know, I've always wanted to represent my community, have represented my community, and here I am.
Let me just say, people who share a common interest and a common bond is to how to move forward. When those people come together, it doesn't, there's no coercion. It's basically a renaissance of ideas to move forward and that's what I'm, and she uses many, many meetings. And I would add three many-many's to that as far as having meetings. I've been to a lot.
There have been many backroom meetings.
You guys are losing.
There have been many, many backroom meetings.
You guys were really down to like one minute left. So Al, I'm going to give you the first word, then you're going to get the second word, and then your follow. I think that's going to be three. Okay, go ahead. Your closing, this is your chance to run a red.
No, I just appreciate everybody considering voting me. I'm a lifelong resident, I've been extremely involved in this community. I have kids, and I have grandkids on the floor to helping establish a community to where my kids that have advanced degrees have a place to come back and stay and just be part of this community and stuff like that.
Okay, Heather, quickly, your closing argument.
Just that, number one, I'm the best candidate for the position. I'll give a hundred and ten percent in this role. I have a history of giving a hundred and ten percent in the world that I take. And, you know, I've lived here for fifteen years. And if you look at my record of commitment and achievements and public service just in the last fifteen years, it far surpasses my opponent and I'm the correct choice.
Al, do you give us a hundred and ten percent?
I'm backed by the people in the community.
I give a hundred, I'm not aware of anything above a hundred.
Well, I think it's been a very spirited debate. Either one, I haven't announced, I don't want to cut anybody else off. But we are out of time. Is there any last one or do you feel good?
I would like to address why it's been so spirited. So I've, you know, been sort of staying on a median. Frank Bruno's call, I guess.
You've been a little bit.
But up to this point, you know, it's been a very, been a very median, you know, campaign and things. But, you know, now it has turned very negative for my opponent. And I'll just say that, you know, I can understand why he would be upset or worried and be so passionate about needing to come in at the last minute, of course, since we did do so well in the primary. Forty-three percent was back to the great. But there have been lots of lies and lots of misleading information put out at the last minute.